Right, I'll call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge. All right, first up is a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the council meetings from August 5th and August 12th, the community center meeting August 11th, EDA meeting August 11th, the HRE meeting August 8th, library meeting August 12th, the planning commission August 12th, and the regular bills. Unless anybody has any questions, comments, additions, changes, we'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jenny. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next up is public comment on the Fort Belmont Foundation. Ken Cruz and Craig Hakes, if you would make your way to the table there. Just hit the button on your microphone, make sure the red light is on. And thank you guys for being here.
Red lights.
Right up here.
Up here. There we go.
Yeah, we're good.
Now, first of all, I'd like to thank the city and the citizens of Wyndham for approaching us on the log cabin down in Island Park. That was a wonderful surprise that we got this spring. We're hoping to have it moved by now. We have Pioneer Days coming up this weekend. And I was hoping to be able to show that off to everybody and tell them about the gift you guys gave us. We'll have all fall and winter to work on and off on it. And we've got some plans that we're gonna do, so we're definitely anxious.
Yeah, thank you very much for, you know, the offer that I... I've been with the fort for 37 years now, so I'm coming old timer. And all of this, I was involved with, you know, the Delph... Moving the Delphill Church and the Lysgaard log... Or the Lysgaard home and the summer kitchen and all that before too. So, I've been with the, you know, with the fort since we started moving anything out there. So, it's... But we're really excited about getting the building. And it's gonna fit into what we have so well. And the history of it, I think is such a neat history too. So, it... And we even... We have a lot of people anxious to see and wanna watch it being moved. And there's a lot of excitement about it, so thank you very much.
Do you guys know, and I don't know if... Do we know? Did I miss something on when it is scheduled? Is it scheduled to be moved, or?
It was scheduled to be moved August 1st. The mover was having trouble on another part down in Iowa with some equipment, so it got delayed. I talked to him this week, and he hasn't set a date yet. But it'll probably be closer to September. And I'll definitely let you guys know if I hear a date.
Does that interfere with any Birm stuff? We're good?
So, we've got our pre-construction conference with our Birm contractor on Thursday next week, correct? Thursday next week, so we'll talk with them and see what... If that's gonna be in their way, or how we can coordinate that. Certainly, we'll find out that information and communicate it back to these gentlemen to make sure that we can work around that as best we can. But, yeah, we were hoping to kind of have this underway and in place before this work started in the park.
Well, maybe you guys just keep in good communication with us, and we'll just all cross our fingers for the mover to make it happen quickly.
Sooner the better.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we've had some challenges in the past, you know. The Delphill Church, you had to cut the steeple off of that, you know. And the Lysgaard house was actually built in three parts, and it made it in one piece. So, we've had some good challenges already, but everything's always worked out. We've had so many things that have happened with Fort Belmont that really weren't in our plans. And everything has really worked toward, you know, a real positive outcome. So, it's been exciting, one thing after the other. Everything has just always worked really good for us, so... And so, hopefully, when we get it all set, then everybody can come down and see it and see what we've done with it, so.
I just wanna say thank you guys for coming down and rescuing it, 'cause it came close to not being a part. Because we advertised somebody to come get it, and then nobody really... Couldn't find nobody that... A home for it. And so, I'm glad you guys found a home for it and it's a good fit for you guys, 'cause hate to see a part of history like that go away. Just that it was getting... It needs a little bit of work. And as the city of Wyndham, we didn't have nobody that knew how to do that kinda stuff. So, I'm glad that somebody knows how to do it and has a little history with it, can take care of it and make it a good home for it and a good fit for you guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We...
Er... Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I don't know whatever happened. I know 25 or maybe 30 years ago, somebody approached us about moving it then. And then it was just kinda forgotten about again. So, I was excited to hear that it came up again and that it was offered to us, so.
So, what I was gonna say was, after you guys approached us and I came up, got the history of it, and then just a little luck, I went down to Spirit Lake to look at their museum. Then I was told that they're redoing or re-chinking the Abbey Gardner cabin down in Spirit Lake. And I had some pictures of a log cabin in Island Park. And they showed them, and they looked at the tink that we guys redone in 1970, being re-chinked. And they go, "You guys did a good job of taking care of it." So, they were impressed, and I was very happy too, so.
Right, well, thank you very much for the update. And I just wanna let you know, thank you too for being willing to take it. I think, from my perspective, that was a great compromise for the community. I think it's good for it to go back to its roots in Jackson County. So, I appreciate the work you guys are taking on for taking it and keep in touch and...
And it's gonna be close by for everybody to come and still see it, so.
Yeah, we'll come over.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, next up, are there any department heads that wanna speak now? Not later? Okay. Moving on, we've got public hearing residential tax abatement for 1955 Bud Road. Welcome, Sonia Wiltz, our EDA director.
Thank you. Before you, you have a tax abatement request from Preferred Choice Homes for 1955 Bud Road, which is in the Gove Acres subdivision, Lot 7, Block 2. That was approved by the school last week, the county this morning. Estimated value of the home is $210,000, with a total of five-year estimated abatement of $6,645.35. And staff recommends approval of the request.
So, what we need... Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax abatement.
Excuse me, I think, Mayor, we should open the public hearing first, get comments.
Sorry about that.
Nope.
You're just on the ball. I like it. So, we'll open the public hearing on the proposed residential tax payment for 1955 Bud Road. Does anyone have any comments on this? Going once? No comments? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And now is your time to shine.
Yay, here I am. I'll make a motion to accept the tax abatement for 1955 Bud Road.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion to introduce the resolution to accept the resolution approving the tax abatement for a new home to be constructed at 1955 Bud Road in Wyndham. So, now we'll do a roll call.
Sherman, Esplin, Nelson.
Yep.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
That resolution is introduced.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Next up is Federated Electric Fiber proposal to acquire WyndhamNet. And hi. The action on the agenda... Sorry, I need to scroll through this here. Or are we... I guess I'm not aware of how we're doing this. Sorry, would you like to...
This is... So, Troy Rasmussen from Federated Electric Fiber is here in place of Scott Reimers. He had a family emergency. So, Troy will be giving the proposal. Essentially, it's a mirror of what was provided to the Wyndham Telecom Communications Commission in July. So, this is... They voted to move it on to you. And then, I believe, your telecom chair is here. So, maybe after Federated's made their proposal, you guys ask questions type of thing. And then maybe let the telecom chair go and then see if there's any other discussion.
Welcome, sir. Thank you for being here. Just hit the mic and you'll be good to go.
Thank you. As I said, my name's Troy Rasmus, and I'm the broadband operation manager at Federated Rule Electric. Unfortunately, Scott was not able to be here, so I'm gonna run through some of the notes he gave me that he wanted to make sure we highlighted. And then we can go into whatever questions he might have of me. So, we'll get going. We are here to ask your consideration on an exclusivity agreement with Federated in order to... The two entities to share information, which may lead to an agreement. Federated believes that we would be a natural suitor due to our presence in the area already and our commitment to service. Federated has spent quite a few months performing due diligence, both with financial and operational. Olson Thielen accountants were enlisted for the financial component. And Finley Engineering performed the outside plant review and evaluation. Both products were combined, and we formed our opinion of a business needed to make this project work. The Federated Board of Directors, which we have a few here tonight, has endorsed it. And the financing of the project hasn't been accounted for based on our valuation of the plant and assets. We would be happy to address any questions you may have. And the presentation from our meeting with Telecom Committee was in your board packet. We've had a newspaper... A couple newspaper articles out there, and they have posed some questions, which we've answered, that they have. We want this to be a good decision on part of the city of Wyndham and want our constituents to have confidence in the 90 years of successful operations Federated has had since its beginning. The seven cooperative principles will give the community the confidence needed to move forward with Federated over our... Over any other suitors you may consider. We will honor transparency, member service, commitment to community, and the wherewithal to succeed. So, with that, I will open to, you know, whatever questions you might have.
If you guys have questions, please feel free to hit your mic and go.
This is just way off the wall. Now, most... How can I put this out there? Would you have a senior rate at some of your packages that you would put out for the... 'Cause we have a community full of seniors, and they're on a fixed income. And if we would get rid of something like this and we raise the price beyond their reach, that does the city no good.
We've looked at WyndhamNet's package offerings, and I believe they have one. And we were right in line with that. So, yes, there will be.
Okay.
Jenny, do you have any questions or comments, or?
No, I guess, I mean, I've read through... I mean, and tonight is really, you know, just gathering information. I mean, I've heard comments from the public and, you know, just overall, I think some of the public was thinking tonight, we were like selling tonight. You know, like, that's what tonight was about. And so, just... So, the public understands tonight is not the council voting that we are selling tonight. So, that, you know, just is a misunderstanding of some of the public that thought we were coming here and voting that tonight we were actually selling. So, that wasn't what the council was planning to do tonight, was saying we were selling it to you tonight. Tonight was just gathering information and moving forward to say, you know, are we looking at selling off our telecom? And moving forward with that process, which I think, overall, from my position with the city, I'm looking at, you know, I don't feel that, on the city, we've ever been in a really good position or a strong position that, as a city, we have the oversight, I guess, or the people employed within the city to really have a good understanding of telecom and the future of telecom. I think you need to have really strong people that are in that field. And that's a very difficult field, a very technical field. And I think there's very few people, like, living within the community that have that kinda mind frame or, you know, expertise in that field to know that. And for telecom to grow and really, you know, to take advantage of all the potential out there, I think we do need to look at expanding and being more of... More than just a city entity. So, I can see the need for us to look at, I guess, selling that off. Because to make money in that, we can't just be a little city entity. It needs to be something that grows and expands, because the investment needs to be there. You need to widen that base. And you need to have, you know, the people that understand that. I do not understand telecom information that goes right over my head. So, for me to think, sitting on city council, that I could direct the telecom to say, "Okay, this should be your six-month goal." And in six months, I could go and say, "Have you accomplished that goal?" I wouldn't have a clue, you know, whether you have or haven't. And so, I don't feel that I'm a responsible, you know, person sitting on this council to direct and know that about telecom. And I don't know of any of us, probably on council, that, you know, know that. And so, that's why I feel like to be a responsible person, to oversee the telecom, you know, maybe that's something that the city needs to look at, you know, moving off to somebody else that can make that successful. And so, in reading all of this, a lot of it was over my head, because a lot of it has that technical stuff. And so, I do feel that this is something we need to consider, is looking at, you know, whether it is Federated or whether it's something... But we do need to look at letting this go as a city, I think, and letting it expand and carry on to something else, something bigger and better.
So, you spoke of growth and expansion.
Yes.
So, let me just kinda run through where Federated is at in terms of Cottonwood County and this whole thing. We entered into an agreement with the county commissioners, and we are constructing a fiber ring throughout the county that we will kinda wrap the whole county up. Our intention is to get to every rural customer, every customer in Cottonwood County that does not currently have fiber. We... When looking at this, part of what we need to do is build density to be, you know, good stewards of our finances and also redundancy. So, WyndhamNet was a pretty good fit for that, because it helps us gain some of the density we talk about, and it adds in that redundancy. So, it also gives WyndhamNet redundancy also to, you know, keep the reliability of the service up. We have built out the city of Storden already. We are in a grant round for BEAD. And if you've seen the news, you know how much turmoil that's been lately. But that will cover... Our application for that is over 1,000 passings, with 80% of those being in Cottonwood County, kinda east of town going north to the kinda north tip of Cottonwood County. So, that kinda fills in a lot between Mountain Lake and here. You know, so we're looking at a really comprehensive package in Cottonwood County. We're also looking at, you know, our main mission that got us rolling on all this is to get fiber to every one of our members in Jackson and Martin County that are not already served. So, we're really looking at making a regional kind of internet power, you know, to carry forward into the future and make sure everybody gets what they want, you know, need for connectivity. It should, and, you know, there's a lot of articles and talk that you get the internet out in the country like that. It does improve the rural economy, helps businesses market better and move things forward, which overall should be a good, you know... That should flow into the city of Wyndham also. You know, so those are a lot of things we looked at in consideration and why we feel this is a really pretty good fit for both entities.
I also think it's a good idea, but I think Wyndham has to step back and look at it as a business project or type of thing and find out what WyndhamNet is worth before we can actually talk about any sale. 'Cause I, as a person sitting right here or a citizen of Wyndham, I have no idea what a internet business would be worth on the open market type of thing. So, I think we need to figure out how much... I mean, otherwise, we're just gonna give something out. We don't know what it's worth. And I don't wanna lose any money on it type of thing. I know we have a debt on it, but we... It should be figured out one way or another how much it potentially could be worth to the city of Wyndham and the Dax Bears.
Yeah, and we certainly support due diligence on both sides.
One question I really have is, if we decided to sell to you folks, what about the employees that we have now? What would happen to them?
We want them all to come on board. You know, they're... It doesn't change the need for the employees. We hope that they come on board.
I had to lose a job a time or two. It's not fun. So, that's what my concern would be, is to the employees themselves.
And I was at the telecom meeting and saw the original presentation, so I don't... And we received everything in the packet. I don't personally have any questions.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions for this gentleman? Okay, I think we'll... Thank you for being here. And Dirk, if you would like to come up and just explain your... As chair of the Telecom Committee, if you have anything to say you'd like us to know, you can do so. If you could hit the other button on the other mic there, thank you.
All right, yes, Dirk Abraham. I'm the president of the Wyndham Telecommunications Commission. Too bad I can't talk. I might be able to get a job in that field. Okay, just very briefly, and I'll try to keep this brief just for the benefit of the public. A while back, you know, the Telecom Commission was approached, and we were told that, I'll just say, an outside party had interest in a possible merger or acquisition of WyndhamNet Enterprise and Equipment, et cetera. So, we formed, I'd say, an ad hoc committee and met with this outside party and heard their presentation. And at that time, we did not choose to move forward with further discussions. Then we were informed that another outside party had interest. And same ad hoc committee met with that outside party, which I can say was Federated. And following those discussions, we felt that there was some merit to moving forward with further discussions. So, the two sides, some non-disclosure agreements were signed, and the two sides exchanged a lot of information. So, as a member of the Telecom Commission, I got a chance to look at their information. And the Federated folks had a chance to look at our financials and get an inventory of our equipment and so forth. As you mentioned, they've had an outside appraisal done from their end. And then that led to, in the July meeting, a formal presentation was made to the Telecom Commission at that time. The commission voted to forward the matter to the city council for further review and consideration. And that's where we are tonight. Again, if the public's watching, no decisions have been made. And I know, I think Steve will get to this in a minute, that if the city wants to move forward, you would probably want to have your own appraisal done. So, we have a basis to begin negotiations. But, you know, so we're not selling anything yet, but we're at least willing to stick our toe in the water and see if these current discussions lead to something. And for me, that's a very brief report. Questions on anything?
With a voice like that, you probably should see what happens as far as...
Yeah, I'm pretty high-priced now with all this experience, so I don't know if they could afford me.
Does anyone have any questions for Dirk? My, thank you, and thanks for your time and effort. I know I've been to a couple of those meetings too, just listening. And I know you guys have been really having good conversations about it, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'll say that I know there are two sides to this. There are some, maybe are some people that think, you know, selling it would be a good thing. I think there are some people who believe that, no, we shouldn't sell it, and we should continue to run it as a municipal operation. So, I'll just... I'll acknowledge that there are two sides to it. And we certainly hope to, you know, hear from both sides. And I'm sure if members of the public have opinions, they should address it to you folks.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dirk. Steve, do you have anything on this, or do you wanna go over anything? Or we've got the...
Just the... So, in the memo in the packet, so what was included in here, we've talked a couple of times about, you know, business valuation. So, should the council want to continue discussion, I think the prudent next step would be to engage a firm to evaluate WyndhamNet. As I think Troy and Dirk both stated, Olson Thielen and Finley Engineering have done the work on behalf of the Federated folks. Those are actually two of the firms that WyndhamNet used when WyndhamNet started 20 years ago. So, we would be looking for a different third party to come in and do that. I did reach out to our auditors, Clifton Larson Allen, and a contact of mine at the Leagum and Sota Cities to see if they had some recommendations or some names of companies that do this kind of work. And I think I have four or five. So, that's kinda what's in the memo here. Should the council want to continue this discussion, either with Federated and/or other parties, or just so you have peace of mind and know what your system is worth, if council so chooses, we should then engage that third party to do a business valuation. Now, that will cost a little money. I don't know what... How much yet. I didn't wanna kinda jump the gun until council had your opportunity to have discussion and questions with these folks. So, if you... That's what's in the packet. So, if it's your decision that we should continue discussion and get WyndhamNet evaluated from an appraisal standpoint, then I would reach out to those firms, get some quotes back to you, and then we can take that next step. But I guess at this point, that's the decision that I'm asking you. But I guess at this point, that's the decision that I'm asking you for this evening.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the business evaluation and let Steve get ahold of the contacts to get ahold of them, our valuations.
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jim, to engage getting quotes from firms for appraisal of WyndhamNet. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, I'm sorry.
Again, we are not selling yet, we're just looking into it. So just ease up and it, it's gonna take a long time before we figure out which way we're going with it, forward or backwards or what. But I just want to tell people, cause I can see this coming after us real quick. But thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the Planning Commission recommendation, and this is on variance request from a garage, garage construction at 2165 Cottonwood Lake Drive. Mr. Montgomery had applied for a variance, and this was one where it was on the table when there was three variance discussions a month ago now, not the last meeting, but the one before, and we had all gotten an email just right prior to the council meeting. So we decided to table it, and this is coming back to that. And I welcome Matt Fast, the Building and Zoning Department Head. Thank you, Matt.
Matt Fast, Building and Zoning, just to give us some background on this again. Joshua Montgomery filed an application requesting a variance to delay construction and placement of a garage on his property at 2165 Cottonwood Lake Drive until sometime in the future. Applicant purchased the vacant lot and modular home to move on to the property. He obtained a building permit and contractors installed the foundation for the house. The house has since been moved on the lot. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application on July 8th, 2025. Following review of the application information and code requirements, the public hearing, comments from the property owner, additional code information provided by staff, Planning Commission approved a motion to recommend that the City Council deny this variance application. Reasons for these recommendations include, but are not limited to the following. City Code Section 152, 495B1 provides that all single-family homes built, assembled, or placed on residential lots must provide at minimum access to and space for off-street parking for two standard-sized vehicles. This requirement shall include sheltered off-street parking for a minimum of one standard-sized vehicle. Minimum dimensions of the sheltered space shall be a depth of 20 feet and width of 12 feet with a door height of seven feet. Mr. Montgomery stated he did not have a timeframe for construction or placement of a garage on the property. He also stated that his request to delay the garage is economically related as the money comes along. City Code Section 152, 565 defines practical difficulties and further states that economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties. City Attorney has advised that this request for variance does not meet the definition of practical difficulties or meet all the requirements for the granting of a variance. The granting of a vari- this variance could set a precedent. In its motion, the Planning Commission found that the applicant has not established that there are practical difficulties as defined by state statute, and complying with the ordinance and the application applicant has not established there are not, there are unique circumstances of the property. As you know, in the afternoon of July 15th, just prior to the City Council meeting, Mr. Montgomery emailed a letter to the city council members. City Council discussed this application, the questions raised in Mr. Montgomery's letter, and requested responses to these questions. City Council then approved a motion to table a variance until the August 19th City Council meeting. Building and zoning staff reviewed the city code provisions and included a response to Mr. Montgomery's letter, together with a copy of the site plan that Mr. Montgomery submitted with his building permit application in the council packet. Also included in the council packet was a response to Mr. Montgomery's letter submitted by Brett Mattson, Chairman of the Planning Commission. At this time, we would ask to continue, or excuse me, deny the variance application submitted by Josh Montgomery requesting the variance to delay the timeframe for construction or placement of the garage on his residential property.
I'll make a motion to deny the variance on the garage on 2165 Cottonwood Lake Drive.
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jenny, to deny the variance application submitted by Josh Montgomery requesting a variance to delay the time for construction and placement of a garage on his residential property. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I think, you know, your commission did the due diligence, you know, you gave him extra time, you guys researched his questions, responded to him again. I think we've done everything that we can and, you know, thank you to your commission to look into this and do everything that you could do to explain it. We can't, you know, make exceptions to things, and so we need to go by what the guidelines are. So thank you though for trying to see what else you could do.
What happens now, he's got his house set.
He'll have to either attach the garage or place the garage. He can do a detach, but it's gonna have to fit within the city code provisions.
And that's got, he can't have it any further in front than any of the other houses, correct?
Correct, actually not further than his house is. So his best bet is to attach it as he, as he laid out in his site plan, which we talked about prior to.
I know he, that was in his plan, so his real hangup, I guess, is more or less driveway also then, isn't it?
Yeah, he'll have to have a driveway up to it, which will be lengthy, but.
And he knew what the ordinance were before he ever started.
Yeah, yeah, I've been working with him since late February on this. And, yeah, we discussed having to have a garage. He was in, he wanted to get going so he could get it on this summer, so I think he was hoping that the variance would be granted and he wouldn't have to put a garage, but I warned him of the, what the city code requirements are.
I don't think we should open a Pandora's box for there, it's part of it either. That, to me, you're just starting something then.
I just want to say thank you for your work in this and your commission too. I've spent a lot of time on this, more than I thought I would, with between phone calls with Mr. Montgomery and you and Brett Mattson, been to those meetings. I was on the fence about this, but I'm very new and I don't understand all of these things. And I think the one thing that got me with some of the things, well, I think maybe there's some difference in interpretation, cause Mr. Montgomery is also on a planning and zoning commission where he lives. So I think just the way that different committees interpret things, I, I think he was hopeful for a little more wiggle room, but the more that you and I talked, I realized that the things that kind of hung up some of this to be able to push it through to help him, cause I want to like, help, I want people to want to invest in the community. But a lot of them are state-set and we can't do anything about that. But I think that you did a fantastic job, your commission was great. I appreciate all the time and I just think this is how it's just, this is how it's gonna be, this is how it's supposed to be. It's just what it is. So thank you very much for everything you did, for lots of conversations for that. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Next up is a first reading of ordinance number 202, second series, amending the zoning designation of three parcels. And you're up again, Matt.
The Messer Machine property at 1755 First Avenue is currently for sale and is zoned as I-1 light industrial. The Building and Zoning Office has been contacting concerning, concerning commercial use of this property. However, most commercial uses would not be allowed in the I-1 district. All these businesses surrounding this property is owned as B-2 highway business. The B-2 district, which in addition to allowing commercial use of this property, could allow an I-1 use under a conditional use permit. Rezoning this property would open up additional uses for the property. I spoke with Bob at Bonnie Messer and they have consented to the rezoning of this property to B-2. On August 12th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and then recommend, recommended the proposed rezoning of this property to B-2. The properties at 164 12th Street, owned by Jeffrey Wright, and 174 12th Street, owned by Rachel Borkland, are residential properties located south of Carl's Repair. These two properties were inadvertently zoned as I-1 light industrial. All of the other residential properties on this block are zoned as R-2 urban 1 and 2 family. Residential uses of this property are not permitted uses in an I-1 district. I spoke with both property owners and they have consented the rezoning of these properties to R-2. On August 12th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, then recommended the proposed rezoning of these properties to R-2. Proposed ordinance number 202, second series, was prepared to amend the Wyndham zoning map and rezone these properties recommended by the Planning Commission. The ordinance has been reviewed and approved by the City Attorney. Recommend, recommendation would be that City Council review and approve the first reading of ordinance number 202, second series. This proposed ordinance is an amendment of the Wyndham zoning map to rezone three parcels within the city of Wyndham.
Does anyone have any questions on this or anything? Okay, so we're looking for a motion to review and approve the first reading and is that it? Is that the verbiage? Review and approve the first reading of ordinance 202, second series. Is there a?
I'll make a motion to review, for the first reading of the ordinance 202, rezoning three parcels.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Scott, second by Jenny, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is the Airport Taxiway Widening and Engineering Services Grant Authorization. Thank you, Steve.
I'll take this one. Yeah, that's fine. So it's for our 2025 taxiway widening project. The project is $214,475. It's been on our capital improvement. It's 95% federally funded. The remaining 5% is split between the state of Minnesota and the city of Wyndham. Our share is $5,362, of which we budgeted dollars for in our last year's budget. The state is under some changes of their staffing and there's some time crunch in getting their grant agreements out. Normally, we'd have the grant agreement in the file to be acted on. They didn't have the grant agreements ready to go to print yet, but they are due the night, 29th of August. So what they had requested is that we approve authorization for the mayor and I to execute the grant agreement when it's available. And then based on the letter of application for that project, and that's what was in the packet, is this letter that outlines the work, contractor engineering costs, the admin costs, and then the split between the parties. And so this is the grant that we would be getting coming across would be the federal grant for $203,751. We'll then get a state grant for $5362 and then we would have that match. So this is a project that they would start on yet this year, so.
So we're looking for a motion to authorize City Administrator Nasby and myself to execute a grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for a grant to fund the 2025 taxi lane widening project.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jim, second by Jenny, is there any further discussion?
I'm gonna abstain, cause my relationship with the airport.
So then do I vote on this? Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Next up, pool discussion FEMA report. We saw that come in. Sorry, just gotta get to this here. Not super good news from FEMA. Do you want to start this out? Steve, thank you.
Just, just a brief overview, as, as you just mentioned, we did get our determination letter back from FEMA, I believe it was on the 4th of August that came in. And so I think I mentioned it at the August 5th council meeting, that you'd be having something on your agenda tonight. So the letter, copied letters in the packet. So FEMA did take a look at the damage we claimed on the pool. They essentially summarized it as the equipment and things like that that were damaged, they would probably give us some reimbursement for. I believe that's $287,000, if I'm remembering my number correctly. However, yep, $285,171. However, they denied our request for 2.1 million, which was for the pool vessel or the shell itself, because that had some cracking, had some damage. And then of course, the underground piping that's underneath that, you know, you, you can't see, cause it's underground, right? And so, so they denied the pool vessel because of the age of the vessel. It was built in 60s, it's at the end of its economic life, and that was actually stated in the feasibility studies and things like that that the city has done over the last 10 years. There have been a couple of pool studies done, there were some soil borings or coring sampling that was done. And those reports also indicated that the pool was nearing its end of its economic life. As far as the piping and things underground, FEMA said that you can't prove a pre-disaster condition, nor can we confirm a post-disaster condition of that plumbing that's underground. Our argument was that it was an operating pool, it held water, water circulated, we're maintaining a state license. We provided them 15 years of pool maintenance records in support of that. However, this is their determination that has come back. And so, as you noted, this was not good news. So right now, the city has the opportunity, if we so choose, to appeal the FEMA decision. We have 60 days and that clock started on August 4th, so we would have until October to formally file an appeal. I did take this letter, determination letter, and I did provide it to our civil engineers at DGR. I also provided to Burback Aquatics, they were the firm that has done the pool feasibility studies for us. They also did the pool valuation study for us that FEMA required before this submission was made to them for the claim on the damage. So they have quite a history with it. I have talked to the DGR engineers and they did not see anything in the termination letter that kind of stood out as a red flag or something to really hang our hat on as far as making an appeal. I also got a letter today back from Burback, I had reached out to them. The letter they sent back again said that there really wasn't a whole lot that they saw in the letter to, you know, make a, an appeal on. However, they did note that in the valuation work that they did for the submission of this at FEMA's request, they had placed a salvage value of the pool at $500,000. So they said if you want or are interested in filing an appeal, that was really what they thought we should focus on, as FEMA's accepted the rest of the valuation study for what it was, but is ignoring the salvage value that they claimed at 500,000. So whether we would get very far with that, it's kind of the difference between, you know, 275 or 271 and, and 500. But that's kind of where we're at right now. Burback did not give me a number if we so chose to make, file an appeal for them to do any other professional follow-up on it. I'd imagine it would be relatively inexpensive, probably less than. I'd imagine it would be relatively inexpensive, probably less than 5,000. But I couldn't tell you that right now. So I just said, thank you for that information. I would pass that along to you. See what your questions are, what your thoughts are. And if we need to have some other clarification or some other information, we can certainly do that and still be within our appeal window, you know, up until, you know, the next couple of meetings. But if we're going to do that, I'd just soon get something started and rolling, you know, sooner than later. So we don't miss that window. But that's kind of the summary of this situation.
I'd suggest appealing it. I mean, if it comes through, great. If it doesn't, well, we really haven't lost anything.
Are you willing to spend any money on it, though? That's the question.
He already's got the checkbook.
And that ain't fair. I was built in the 60s and I still got a lot of left left in me, so let's go. No, but it I understand. If there if there is a leg to stand on for that 500,000, if we could get a reasonable appeal, but I think the citizens too have been very, very vocal about this. We've been studying this pool for long enough. It's tired of looking at it. It's something maybe we need to get put to bed and just move on and take, if we can do a salvage for what we can for the equipment and take that monies and make something out of that area that Wyndham can still use and take care of. Maybe we need to look at that because there is some other stuff we were looking at, maybe using that site for type of thing. And I'd be more than happy to talk to anybody that would like to talk about it, but we would like to, my my personal feeling would be if we could salvage the area and put the dog park up on there with doing what we things we have to look into to get far as burying the area and stuff like that. I don't know if we can use that money far as taking stuff out or how far we have to go with before we can cover that hole up type of thing.
Those would all be questions we're going to have to work through as we move along in this process.
Yeah, I guess I don't. I don't hold much hope that we're going to appeal FEMA and get more money from FEMA. And I don't want to put a ton more money into trying to fight FEMA either just because I don't hold much hope that we're going to get much more money out of them. So I guess I'd take what we got and try to do the best that we can with it is maybe where I'm at.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if we just, do we look into how much it could cost us to get some more figures to appeal it? Or do we just decide yes or no? And I think one thing, you know, when we talk about looking into it and covering up, I think some of the public might hear like, oh, they just want to cover it up like the pool. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, even if FEMA had said, here's the 2.1 million dollars for the pool, here you go. You cannot fix it where it's at because of the risk of flood again, right? Like we it has to go elsewhere.
When they've provided dollars in the past for like a remediation, because that's what this would kind of fall into, yes, then they would want you to relocate outside of the flood plain. Now, if we took these dollars and fixed our pool, let's just say we're going to take these, buy new heaters, do those kind of things, then that's up to us and, you know. But if we're going to rebuild something, then we're going to be looking at a different location.
So I don't I don't know. What do you guys think?
I think that's always been a poor place for a swimming pool myself.
I guess just for time wise, maybe we just put this one to bed. Because we've been working on this for two years now since the flood or a year now since the flood. I mean, we've stuck a lot of money into it and we're only getting a little bit back. And how far do you keep kicking this dog before we say, okay, enough? Well, not kicking the dog, but kick a can, kick a can. No, I'm a 62 model. Hold on, don't kick much. No. It's just just something that the citizens, I think, is ready to be done with because it's something we need to look at somewhere else making some, take that money, make something good out of it, what we can. Take our little bit and take our ball and go home and refurbish the ball into something different.
Yeah, I mean, we'll still have to talk about, you know, potential then, you know, demolition or things like that too down the road. And that's, you know, I believe that the valuation had an estimate of around a quarter of a million for demolition. So, you know, now that is if you hire a contractor and have to do some remediation, have to remove that kind of thing. If we're able to, you know, if it goes that direction and, you know, do demolition on site and that can kind of stay there, then we could certainly do that, a lot of it ourselves maybe, and do it a little bit cheaper. But so there will be those costs too, even if we move forward, just so everybody's aware.
So do we need a action if we're not going to appeal it?
So if you're, yeah, I guess it was just if you wanted to file an appeal. I guess, as I noted, we have a little time. I mean, if you want me to reach out to Burback and see if they would do it, you know, pro bono or, you know, something like that and take a shot at it, we could sure do that. Or come back and tell you what it's going to cost. If it's going to be a high amount, then you guys make the decision, just move on, let's go. Or if they come back, say, hey, let's do it. As council member Nelson noted, maybe it's just worth a shot, throw it in there. If it costs us a little nothing, the worst they can do is tell us no again. So.
But let's go with what Jim said, see if we can find out. I'll make a motion to go with.
Okay.
For a stud, not a study, but.
How about if we tape officially make a motion to table it to the next meeting? And then I'll get that other information from Burback and bring it back to you. And then you can make a determination.
I'll make a motion to table it until we find further information on the pool.
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jim to table this until we have further information. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Oh, that pool. Okay, next up is from memo from the Personnel Committee. So there was a Personnel Committee meeting on Tuesday, August 12th. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, please, please. Yes, I was getting ready to go into the spiel because Mr. Sherman is gone and he's the Personnel Chair. But then I just wasn't, sorry.
Okay.
I'm still disappointed about the pool, so my, yeah. Welcome, Donna Torkelson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're about a couple. We're just a couple of weeks from starting our winter office hours. And I did ask to meet with Personnel Committee on a suggestion of changing our office hours, since we're going to change them anyway, that we could just change them at that time. In order to save overtime costs, I asked that we could make the public hours eight to 4:30 and our office hours stay at eight to five. And that will give staff 30 minutes to wrap up any unfinished work, balance out the cash drawer and be out of there on time. So I guess that is what I'm asking. The Personnel Committee did recommend that we we do start eight to 4:30 with public hours and eight to five with staff hours. So I guess that's what I'm requesting.
Well, I'll recommend to accept.
I'll second. Motion made by Jim, second by Jenny to approve the hours change from eight to 4:30 for the public and eight to five for staff starting the Tuesday after Labor Day.
Is this going to now next spring when you change your hours again? What will we do?
We did not talk about spring. I guess we have a couple of options there. We could leave it as is and and staff would have to try to get out of there on time. Or the staff hours would go from 7:30 to 4:30 with our lunch. And we stay with the normal summer hours for the public of 7:30 to four. So that would still give them that extra half an hour. But we have, we didn't talk about that. I thought we'd wait and see how this goes and.
Well, I think it would be best to do it now and get it over with. You guys will have that extra half hour, you know, to avoid anything not happening.
Can you say that again? You think we should do what?
Have the same type of hours come spring as what you have. Just change the hour, whatever, which way it was. So that you still have that extra half hour to.
I do think this is going to work out very well with that 30 minutes of, because it is alive, especially on busy days, that you're that you're counting and balancing who came in, what your what your checks are, what your cash is and things like that. So it it it's not an instant process. So when you lock the door at four and then have to start counting that money and balancing that drawer out, you just don't, you just don't get that done on time. But it's up to you guys. I guess, like I said, I did not, I did not ask about summer hours. I thought we'd work through this a couple of months and see because that would not be until the first of May.
Is there any other further discussion on this?
I guess the only thing I could see happening is closing at four, getting the word out to the public, you know, because a lot of people get off at 3:30, run home to whatever, come down, the doors are locked, you know, that's.
And that's what we have now. And the summer hours, we close at four. So we would be extending that for 30 minutes instead of an hour for the winter hours.
Does anyone else have anything or any questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, next up are mayor appointments and start with a, well, does it matter where I start? Okay, we're going to start with the library board. I did, we had two that resigned during their terms and Kari had asked around and she kind of found her own fill-ins for these two. And then I did speak with them both and they are both excited to serve. And so we'll, we're looking to appoint Sarah Peterson to fill Wade Pfeiffer's unexpired term that will end on 12/31/25. And then we're looking to appoint Diane Sikora to fill Christina Wolf's unexpired term, which will end 12/31/27. And I did just want to mention that Diane, while very excited to serve on the library board, she also serves on Friends of the Library. And she just wanted to make sure that wasn't a conflict of interest or anything. So I did call Steve and subsequently called Ron Trammell and it is no conflict of interest. She's good to serve on both boards. So do these need to be two sep or three separate? All one? Okay. Okay, so then the next one is to appoint Tom White to the Park and Rec Commission. Joanne Ray's seat, she had gotten back to me, oh, I think it was at least two months ago, maybe three, that she needed to give up her seat. And there was a lot of conversation. There was some suggestions about who could fill that. And one guy and I went back and forth playing phone tag for probably six weeks. And we were just kind of out of, I've talked to Tim and John and Tom White has called me in the past about some possible parking rec things. And so I thought, well, I'll maybe he wants to do that. So I did speak with John and and then I called Tom and he was honored and excited to serve on the board. So I guess if those three appointments look good to you guys, we'll take a motion to appoint Tom White to Park and Rec and Sarah Peterson and Diane Sikora to the library board.
I'll make a motion to approve all three of the mayor's recommendations to the boards.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Jenny, second by Scott. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right. Does anyone have any new business? Nobody. How about any old business? No, no old business either. Council comments. Does anyone, Scott starts.
I'll make some kind of comment. But with the weather starting to come into our fall, and I know the summer's just about over, but it isn't quite. But with the fall temperatures and all this other stuff coming along, let's be diligent and take care of, try to take care of our neighbors' needs and take care of our yards and try to put Wyndham in a good spot where come fall, we ain't got stuff scattered all over the place. So it's just, just one of those things like I always ask, take care of your neighbors. And if you help your neighbors, it'll make you a better friend or a better neighbor yourself. So if you see somebody that needs a hand, you don't have to condemn them, but you can ask them if they need any help with assistance in doing their stuff. So just try to help out so we don't have to worry about certain things. But just, I'm glad that the warmer temperature is about over because I am a 62 model and I get hot fast. So just take care of it. But thank you guys for everything you do in the city of Wyndham and the department heads. And tell your people, thank you for all the hard work they've done all summer because we've had a hot summer. It's been a long summer for some people, but thank you guys for all you guys do here. Thank you.
Jenny, have you got anything?
I don't really have a lot. We just have a lot going on within the city. I think a lot of different departments, a lot of, there's just a lot going on. And so I don't have anything specific. I just want to say thank you to a lot of our departments. I know that everyone is working and they're working hard within their departments and on a lot of different projects. Thank you for all the efforts that you're putting in. And I know we have a lot more going on. And so just thank you and citizens, you know, just be watching. There's a lot of things happening. And thank you to the news for keeping up on all the action and all the, bringing all the announcements and information forward so people keep up to date on what's going on because it is ever-changing. I mean, we definitely are a community that has a lot going on. And so keep up to date on what's happening and what's going on in our community because there's lots of stuff happening out there and lots of ways to get involved as well. And so that's going to continue to happen. So definitely, if you have any way to contribute, definitely find a way to get involved and to take a part in helping out within our community.
Nothing for you, Jim? Steve, have you got anything?
Really? Nothing? Please. Well, then I will, last Thursday, Steve and I attended the Coalition for Greater Minnesota Cities Regional Meeting. That was at the community center here. We were the host city. And it was good, nice to meet some of those people. I hadn't met them before. I hadn't participated in any discussions like that. So that was really nice. And I want to just reiterate that the Wyndham net stuff, we are initiating an appraisal, not a sale. And like Jenny said, there is a lot going on. There's going to be a lot of conversations about Wyndham net and the pool. And I hear it and I see it on the parks. And I think all of us are up here because we are willing to talk with the community and listen to them. So I just encourage anybody, you know, if you have questions or you have input. I mean, I mean, my number is pretty accessible. Don't call me 24/7. But I am definitely available to listen to people and share inputs. So just reach out to any of us if you need to or have any questions. The one other thing I wanted to say is that last Tuesday, Wednesday, it was Wednesday when the water main broke out on 18th Avenue and River Road. And I know that took a ton of departments and a ton of people involved with.
And I know that took a ton of departments and a ton of people involved with that. And they had it repaired in like three and a half hours, which me, you guys maybe all been through this. When I heard water main break, I was like, great, we're, it's gonna be all day. And they were so fast, and I talked to Ryan Anderson and asked him if it's not too much trouble, if you could take pictures so that I can see the process. And he did, and I am gonna share those with the community. But it was just really neat to hear how seamlessly it all worked. And we just have awesome people working here. So thank you all that were involved in that and everything that happens day to day. And then my final thought is I'm literally gonna start giving Bob Barker's tagline of help control the population and spay and neuter your pets. I foster for the local rescue a lot, and I just had a mama kitten that came in as a stray. And thank God she only had three kittens instead of eight, but she had them today. And I just think that we all need to do our part with that, because I love animals. But it's, it's an, it's a big job for a lot of people, so spay and neuter your pets. And I think that's it. And if no one else has anything with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.